Good evening. We now call the Wednesday, July 20th, 2016 meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Chester, Mr. Cho. Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Huthman.
Here.
Mr. Warrenbrun.
Here.
Mr. Weiskopf.
Here.
And Mr. Welch.
Here. I believe we do have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda? Then we'll now at this time entertain approval of the minutes. I believe you all have the minutes submitted in your packet.
I move to approve the minutes.
It's been moved and seconded that the minutes of the previous meeting of the zoning board of appeals be approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. Are there any written communications? Continued public hearings? At this time then, I will swear in anybody who may be testifying before the board tonight. Anybody in the audience, please stand up and raise your right hand. Do each of you, to the best of ability, swear and affirm that any testimony you give tonight will be true and accurate. We will now call for hearing ZBA 2016 minor dash two. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, let me.
Staff goes first.
have said 804. In the memorandum, it makes references to both 804 and 806. They're the same address. They have the same PIN number because it was two combined properties. So 804, 806 refers to the subject property in question. So the following application is a request by Robert Devine with Guy Hampel, his architect, for an allowance for an increase in the maximum allowed FAR floor area ratio at their property at 804, 806 West Green Street. The request is for an increase from the maximum allowable FAR from 0.9 to 0.92. The original request was based off of different information that since has been revised between when the legal listing was published and since this staff report was compiled. I can elaborate on that in a little bit. I'll just quickly go to the subject property. It's on West Green Street in the west part of, western part of town between Buce and Lincoln Avenue. It is zoned R5, which is medium high density, multiple family residential. It's an apartment building that was constructed in the mid 1990s. Has 32 units as well. It's future land use designation, just to quickly mention that, is split between campus mixed use and multifamily, which is the same for the property surrounding it depending on which direction you're going. The zoning surrounding it as well has other R5 properties. It has a gas station to the west, which is zoned B1, as well as another apartment building that is zoned R5. Towards the north, you have a religious institution, as well as a religious center in a mosque as well, and that's zoned R5 as well. Towards the east, you have properties that are zoned R5 and R6. They are also apartments. Towards the south, you also have other R5 properties that are gas stations and, I'm sorry, R5 properties that are apartments and another B1 zoned gas station. This is on the edge of campus, as you're probably familiar, right leading up to the University of Illinois campus and eventually Campus Town. The applicant is requesting to construct an accessory storage structure on the north portion of his property. The structure would be approximately 768 square feet. It would be, it would also contain two canopies, nine-foot canopies that would extend towards the west and towards the south. The purpose of the structure would be to provide storage space for the property, for the maintenance needs of the property, perhaps for some items that might belong to tenants, but mainly for, for storage space that the, the property owner could use for equipment and storage items. The canopy space that stretches to the west and south ends of the building is intended to provide recreational cover space for the, the building's tenants, for spaces for barbecue, spaces where they might set up tables and chairs, where they might have a smoke break, where they might just enjoy some time outside when the weather's nice. The western side of the building would have a garage-style access door wider, and then there would be another tip, smaller sized door on the southeast portion of the building. The applicant states that there's, this building is not intended for vehicle storage. That is only intended for equipment or maintenance needed items in the building. That said, the applicant has also indicated that if access were to be needed for the, the neighboring property to the west from the gas station, that an access agreement could be investigated or pursued with the property owner. The applicant states that he and that property owner have good relations and would likely be able to reach such an agreement if that were required. But the issue regard, the other, it's also worth mentioning that this property is within the Boneyard Creek district and that any new construction would require a permit from the Boneyard Creek Commission. The permit approval would be, is an independent process, but part of, part of the approval of that permit is subject to this, a variance that would allow the, an increase in the maximum allowable FAR for the area. Floor area ratio, just to quickly review, is the overall footprint that a building has on the property in which it resides. For the R5 district, the maximum allowable ratio is 0.9 in terms of how many square footage divided by, how many square footage of the building divided by the overall square footage of, of the lot. This building is zoning compliant in every regard as it currently exists, but to install an accessory storage structure would require an increase in the maximum allowable FAR. An increase or an increase within 5% would make that a minor variance according to the zoning ordinance. As I mentioned earlier, the increase was originally calculated to be, to 0.93 for an increase of 3.3%. The numbers provided to us by the applicant from when this application was originally submitted with the legal listing to when the staff report was eventually compiled, the applicant provided us with some more accurate numbers, which changed, which determined that the lot size was slightly larger than originally thought and that the, the request is now to 0.92. So that's an increase of 2.1%. Either way, it's still a minor variance. Also originally advertised with this case was a, was a variance for a change in the minimum amount of open space that is required. The applicant has since withdrawn that application because of changes to the property that the applicant will make to meet that accommodation, as to where he will not be required to seek a variance. So the open space requirement would still be, would still be met as required by the zoning ordinance under this proposal. So the, the applicant had this, owns this property. The building was constructed in 1995, but the applicant did not particularly foresee a need for any space to allow for storage of equipment, as well as to, you know, provide any space for, for the building's tenants to, you know, enjoy the space outdoors. The, the lot is rather tight. The space to the north of the property would allow for construction of a, of an accessory storage building, but the, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tight space. The, the building is also expected to acknowledge an easement that's, that's required of the creek from the center line. There's a 25-foot maintenance easement from the center line of the Boneyard Creek that extends past the floodway that is, that first boundary that you see from the channel. The second boundary is, was a temporary easement that is no longer required to be maintained, but the applicant, the architect of the project still chose to honor that easement to be conservative. So with the, the five criteria, or I'm sorry, with the criteria of minor variance, if there are special circumstances or special difficulties with reference to the, the parcel concerned, the need for a storage building was not necessarily foreseen at the time that the building was constructed. Construction of such now would require a variance. The second question is too, the proposed variance would not serve as a special privilege because the variance is requested due to necessary, or requested is necessary due to special circumstances relating to the land or structure involved or to be used or occupancy thereof, which is not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the district. There's very little other space around the property to construct such a building and it would not increase the occupancy of the lot, nor would it drastically increase the footprint of the building on the lot. The third question, that the variance requested was not the result of a situation or condition having been knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. The lot has always remained the same size. It hasn't been, it hasn't joined on any property since then or been consolidated with anything else. And as I said, the, the anticipation of storage needs was not necessarily foreseen back then. Number four, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It'd be located in the rear of the property, outside of the view from the public, any public right-of-way. Also, the applicant has, has indicated a willingness to put up screening material or landscaping enhancements to improve the aesthetic of the appearance and for the outdoor use of, by residents. Number five, the variance will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. It, it would keep equipment that might be stored outside. It would keep it indoors. It would, you know, it would also weatherproof those materials from being, any materials or equipment from being stored outside. And as I said, you know, landscaping would be able to, or screening would be able to minimize any, any detriment to the, the aesthetics near the Boneyard. And number six, that the variance represents generally the minimum deviation from requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. The increase, the requested increase is 2.1% and from 0.9 to 0.92. So that represents generally a very minimal increase. The board has several options. You can approve the variance as requested. You can approve the variance with certain terms and conditions that you're encouraged to articulate, the findings for those conditions if they're added, or you may deny the request. If you like to do so, you should articulate the findings supporting its denial. Minor variance requires majority of the board to be approved. So the staff recommendation for the, for ZBA case 2016 minor, number two, is approval with conditions that, one, the site is developed in general conformance with the attached site plan, and two, the proposal is issued a Boneyard Creekway permit. I should also mention that the, a preliminary Creekway conference was held for the property, for the proposal, and the commission, excuse me, elected to seek a continuance for the case to allow for the ZBA application to be handled first. And should the variance be granted, another Creekway conference meeting would occur later, later after this meeting. So with those two conditions and the recommendation, do you have any questions that I could answer about the proposal?
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Go ahead.
Can you tell me the difference between a garage and a storage building? Is there any zoning difference?
There's no, the zoning, zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily state the distinction. I can quickly.
I'll help you out, Chris, because I think I understand where you're headed. If it were to be a single-family home or a duplex and it's a garage, it would be exempted and attached, I think. It would be exempted from the floor area because this is an apartment. It is not exempted from the floor area?
It's exempted if it's detached regardless.
Okay, thank you. So there is that distinction there, garage or storage building, but for this type of use, an apartment building, it is the same in terms of needing to, or having its floor area apply?
Well, do we need to be concerned as to how they're going to get to the storage building?
I mean, it is a private property next door. It is somewhat of a private property issue. If we were concerned about it, we could, you know, you could put a condition on it that they need to get an access easement, but since it is a private property issue and since they indicated that they don't intend to store vehicles there, we weren't overly concerned.
The applicant is also, is pretty willing to discuss his relations with his, with his neighbor in that property and his, his realistic ability to access from, from the west, the structure, so.
And then the, the canopy, the memo says 10 feet, and I think you said nine feet.
I stand corrected, yeah. That, it, it would be 10 feet, yes.
On the site plan, am I seeing, is that what I'm seeing there surrounding the building on the west and the south side, where there's some, looks like pegs there, where it's going to come out 10 feet?
Those are designed to support, I imagine those would be designed to support the structure.
Right. So we're not, we don't consider the canopy at all in, in this request?
The canopy is not, this, the canopy and the space below it would not be considered for FAR. FAR definition is from the outermost, outermost wall of the structure.
Are we concerned with what type of surface is below the canopies?
Only, for open space, only if it comprises a certain size, but the canopy space would not detract from that overall area's contribution to the property's open space. If it takes up more than 50%, I believe, a certain amount of open space is allowed to have pavement on it, so.
I just have a clarification on the Boneyard Creek permit. Regardless of whether or not we approve with conditions, they would have to get a Boneyard Creek permit regardless. So is that really a condition? I don't know. If it fails the Boneyard Creek permit, then I guess I'm kind of.
The condition, the condition for the, it would, it would be required to seek a Boneyard Creek permit regardless, but I think that condition is meant to tie this particular, tie this variance to this particular proposal and to not, and to not make sure that it's not used for any other purpose.
Any other questions?
Do we know how tall this storage building is? I calculated possibly that's 32 feet by 24 feet. That got me 768, but.
The architect is also here and might be able to answer more specifically.
To me, one of your criterias was that this be built towards the site plan. The site plan to me seems pretty weak, the one that's in our packet. I don't know if there's an updated one. I guess my only concern here is the height of the canopy to the height of the roof, to the size of the garage door, to whether a truck is going to be able to back up there type of thing. Because what I, what I see. Is that picture in my packet?
No.
Okay. It's a nice picture. So this is actually showing concrete underneath the.
Yes, and.
Canopies?
And concrete, open space is allowed to include concrete if, as long as it's under a small enough percentage. The architect, I, I can, I mean, it might be listed on this figure, but the architect would also be able to answer specific questions, yes.
Okay, well, that's far more advanced than the, is this the site plan that you're referring to, what you're showing us now, as opposed to what's in our packet?
Yes.
So that's A105? Okay, all right.
If you'd like, we could include this, you could include as the, you can expand the condition to include this information if that would be helpful to you. I don't think the applicant would object to agreeing to that.
Anything, anything else for staff?
Well, see, my major problem with this is the size of this and the functionality, but I guess, so if I was provided with this A105, that would have been a tremendous help prior to just seeing it right now. So, I mean, I definitely, that should be included in the recommendation, but.
Go on.
I would just make.
Go ahead.
Oh, I did walk back to the site, and I can see that, given the way the sidewalk is constructed back there, this will not be used for vehicles. You really won't be able to take a truck, a good-sized truck or anything, maybe a golf cart back there, but not a, a vehicle.
If there are no further questions, perhaps it's time to have the architect come forward. Would you all, would you two sign in as well? Thank you. No, you have to sign in the front.
The height of the building is approximately 10 feet. It'll be about nine or eight and a half feet to the bottom of the canopy, which is intended to be metal, so that we're not, nowhere nears the seven-foot minimum that's required for a balcony in there. So does that answer that particular question? Okay. Chris, Christopher did a very good job of summing up. If you need any more information, I'd be happy to give it to you, otherwise I'll just take questions.
Are there questions for the petitioner?
I have a question. More of a clarification, really. There was a question on the application that you filled out. It was, let me find this. Question number five, part five of question number five, was talking about the location of the building, and there was a quote, it said, "It was located to minimize views of the Boneyard Creek from other properties." I was wondering if you could elaborate on that. It wasn't quite clear.
It was to say minimize the restriction of views from other properties, not to deny them, to put, to block it. We were not trying to hide it from anyone else.
The creek you're referring to.
The creek. The, the building is located behind this building and all the other properties are to one side, and they have clearer view, clearer view than originally intended.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Are there further questions for the petitioner?
Okay, two things. One, I don't, to me, the building, is it 32 by 24? Is that a fair assumption?
That's correct.
Okay. To me, that's pretty big, and I was kind of wondering what you'd be storing there. And then from viewing the site today, it looks to me like if you got access from the gas station, that you could easily come straight into that garage door to load, unload things, I would assume. Now, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you're going to park things in there, but that seems like a lot of space.
Do you want me to answer? Well, I can answer that. Well, right now, I have a, a set of five-bay garage in Champaign. I've just sold that property. And so a good example of what I, I do and, or store in that space, I've got 18 sets of condensing units and blower coal units, because I'm going to, I'm doing a replacement of everything in my building now, and so I'll be moving all that, hopefully. I'm moving that. That's the type of stuff I would move over, so I have access to it right on site. So it'd be things like that. And then one of the things that happens every year at move-out, and I've got several requests right now from kids who are moving in in the fall, they're in a building right now where their lease ends early, so they're like, "Well, Mr. Devine, what can we do with our stuff?" And so I'm happy to, in the garages I have now, provide them storage space to move all their boxes into until we get done with our cleanup and painting after, or during changeover, and then they can, they'd be able to just move their stuff from the garages into their apartment after that. So it's, I've done that with the garages in Champaign for a number of years, and that's worked out really well, and I'm just happy to provide that service.
Perhaps you should each introduce yourselves.
I'm Guy Hampel, the architect.
All right. Bob Devine, owner of the property.
Thank you. I have one question. Mr. Devine, you have other properties, I take it, correct?
Well, I did until I sold them off, so.
So this is the only one?
This is the, yes. So I had an office building, and I had a rental house behind that with the garages. I've sold both of those, or I'm closing on the one with the garages August 10th.
Well, the reason why I asked that question, were you trying to limit storage and things to?
To where I need.
To this building, as opposed to other.
Yes, it will not be serving any other building. So what I'm trying to do in selling my properties in Champaign is, I like to, trying to consolidate everything at one location and just make it more efficient, basically, and practical. Now, you guys asked about vehicles and stuff. I don't intend on parking anything except for, you know, lawnmower and stuff in there. It'll probably be like my garage at home. It'll probably be like my garage at home, where I don't park vehicles. You can't park vehicles in there because it's full of stuff. Uh, so that's the intent. I have a large door because sometimes we have couches and larger things that we bring in. It's better to bring in through a garage door rather than a man door, basically a thirty-six-inch door. So that's really the intent of that. As far as, like, there was a question on access to the property. I do have an agreement with Circle K where I have agreed to maintain, you know, the back part of their property in return for access. We do have a good relationship, but still acknowledge that good relationships don't always last for whatever reason. So should that be the case, we would just bring, uh, delivery trucks in through the main parking lot and then just wheel stuff back to the, to the storage garage and load and unload. It would, it would be very efficient to do that as well, so...
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience opposed to this? I'm hearing no one. Are there any further questions for staff in light of the petitioner's additional comments? Then I think we're ready to call this for motion.
I move that we approve, uh, ZBA case two thousand and sixteen, Min-02, with conditions that the site is developed in general conformance with the attached site plan and, what do you want to call those documents? Elevations? And the proposed, the proposal is issued a Boneyard Creek, Creequay permit.
It's been moved. Do we have a second for that? Now, been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
So the elevations are the site plan that we saw here tonight, that A-105, is that, is that what you meant?
Yes, A-105 would be the elevations.
Okay.
And if there are other things in there that don't fit that, we could be sure to attach it, just to, we, we understand your intent.
Is there any further comment? I believe we're ready for vote.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Yutman?
Yes.
Mr. Wormbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we now call case ZBA two thousand and sixteen-dash-major-dash-oh-eight. And we have a staff report. Oh, this means, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't read Farnum. We draw my last comment. We now call case, cases, ZBA two thousand and sixteen-major-dash-oh-six and ZBA dash two thousand and sixteen-major-dash-oh-seven. And those can, those can be heard jointly? Yes? Okay. May I have a staff report, please? Thank you.
I must have incorrectly labeled the packet on the file name, but either way. So both of these var... uh, these are major variance requests for seven oh eight and seven-ten West Green Street. A request by Andrew Fayle on behalf of Dr. Choudry to allow a reduction in the required side yard setback from ten feet to seven feet. And that is the same request for both properties. At seven oh eight and seven-ten West Green Street in the MOR mixed-office residential district. These are currently two vacant properties that were acquired by the property owner rather recently. This was subject to another minor variance requ... Two, these, both these properties were subject to two other minor variance requests, which you might recall several months ago for a reduction in the, uh... Basically, the property owner found that there was a large eighty-two-inch brick art storm sewer that ran under, uh, seven oh eight West Green Street and reduced the amount of buildable area on the property. The storm sewer is that black line that you'll see. That it, the properties were purchased without an easement, that there was no easement that showed up on the title search when the properties were purchased because the storm sewer is so old that it probably predates the existence of the creation of easements for such a purpose. Normally, such an easement would exist for a storm sewer that runs below private property to prevent construction over, uh, the storm sewer. Because that the storm sewer is still functioning and still provides drainage capacity for that neighborhood, our, the city's Public Works Department, uh, as part of its practice, requires, for a storm sewer of that size, requires a ten-foot buffer in each direction of the storm sewer that would prevent construction of a, of a structure over that sewer to prevent it from being damaged during construction or, um, any, or for access in the event that it was damaged for the needs for repair or whatever. Uh, these are two very narrow lots. One is, uh, one is barely at, at the minimum lot width of sixty feet, and the other is at a width of fifty-three feet. Perhaps I'll go back to those dimensions and figures in just a moment. I'm explaining the conditions of the property. So you remember the, there was a previous request to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to twenty feet. Those minor, those minor variances were granted. The, the applicant has since moved forward with, uh, moved forward with a request to construct new structures on the, on the new apartments on the properties. The properties have been successfully, or have been granted a site plan review, a successful site plan review by the city's MOR Development Review Board with several conditions. One of those conditions was the granting of these two major variances. You might wonder why the applicant is coming back to the, the ZBA with a request for major variances after, um, originally being granted, uh, variances for front yard. So when these properties were, when these, when this proposal was initially put forward, it included a request for a reduction in the side yard from seven feet to five feet for one of the properties and a, um, major reduction in the front yard, uh, reduction. Uh, in the, in that, in the process of that application, the property owner and the app, and the architect ultimately concluded that they, it was in their, that they wanted to reduce the required front yard setback, which was eventually granted in two minor variances, and that they would not be requesting a side yard variance for the seven oh eight, uh, West Green Street prop, property. In the process from those variances being granted and the, uh, the review of the MOR Development Review Board, there were changes and there were adjustments to the site plan that had to be made. The, the applicant intended to, for these proposals, for this proposal to meet as much code as possible, or to, to meet code in every, every respectable regard. The bill, uh, basically came the, in the process of the submission of the application for the MOR Development Review, the building height, uh, the applicant discovered was subject to a certain part of the zoning ordinance that states in the MOR district that any building over twenty-five feet must have an additional three feet added to its required side yard and rear yard for every additional ten feet. Basically meaning this, these two buildings would both be thirty-four point seven-five feet in elevation. Because that is nine point seven-five feet over twenty-five, that means they would be required to add an additional three feet to their side yards and to their rear yards. And, uh, if for, if these buildings were twenty feet over the limit, they would have to add six feet. So it's incremental. One, for every additional ten feet in height, an additional three feet in their side and rear setbacks. Uh, both of these properties, uh, the proposals for both these properties would have a rear yard setback that would be well within the requirements for the proposed height of these buildings. Uh, for the side yard setbacks, however, uh, they would, they're obviously asking for a variance. Let me jump forward to the site plan. For the property, uh, towards the east at seven oh eight, its setback would be of twenty feet. I, I'm sorry, I should state, the side yard requirements for the MOR district are the minimum of seven feet on each side and a cumulative total of seventeen feet. So that means that each side yard must be at least seven feet, and if one is seven, the other must be at least ten. So you need seven and ten on each side for a total of seventeen. Uh, you'll see that for the seven oh eight property, it obviously meets the standard of at least ten feet towards the east because of the storm sewer. It has a setback of twenty feet in that space. I guess I'll just quickly shoot up to show that their rear yards meet a, their rear yards would be at forty-two feet and five inches, which is well within the required, um, rear yard setback. For the western property boundary on seven-ten, that property would have a side yard setback of ten feet and six inches. Uh, the applicant states that for, for the proposal and for the, the building form to allow the, uh, to allow the necessary building form, that the side yard shared between both properties, that, that being between seven oh eight and seven-ten, would be required to be, uh, ten feet on each side. So the applicant is requesting for a reduction of that from ten feet to seven feet for their shared boundary, uh, the east side of seven-ten West Green Street and the west side of seven oh eight Green Street. And as I, as I said earlier, the main reason for this variance is because of the, uh, because of the changes and adjustments that were made in the process for the MOR Development Review application. So the, to jump towards the variance criteria. Are there special circumstances or special practical difficulties with reference to the parcels concerned in carrying out the strict application of the law? Uh, the storm sewer, which runs under the seven oh eight property, restricts the, uh, buildable area. It should be noted that in this, in the answer provided in, in the staff report, we indicated, uh, a size of forty-four percent. That the, the number, that calculation, that it, or that a reduction in the available build, buildable area of forty-four percent, that number was done with a smaller lot size than actually, uh, with a lot size of, a lot size of approx, approximately sixty-nine hundred feet. In reality, that lot size is closer to seventy-four hundred feet. Uh, so that percentage is forty percent instead of forty-four. Um, just a minor difference in calculation. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Also, seven-ten West Green Street is seven feet narrower than the minimum lot width as required by the zoning ordinance of sixty feet, so it's a legally non-conforming lot as it is. Uh, the next criteria, that the proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege bef, because the variance requested, the variances requested are necessary due to special circumstances relating to the land or structure involved to be used for occupancy thereof, which is not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same district. As stated earlier, that these properties are sold without any indication or knowledge of an underground storm sewer. There was no easement that showed up on the title search. The narrow, narrower lot, which would not be allowed to be created under today's subdivision rules and zoning requirements. The variances would also only apply to the shared property line and would only impact the property owner who's making the request. Uh, the third criteria, that the variance requested was not the result of a situation or condition having been knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. The sewer line was obviously installed decades before municipal code would have prevented such a location. Uh, it's, also, its location was not so easily discovered when the purchasing process for the properties was occurring. Also, the legally non-conforming width of seven-ten West Green Street. And before, the variances will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The scale of the buildings will remain proportionate to the neighborhood as, um, you know, two separate residential buildings. It's of the staff opinion that it would not alter the plan. Also, the site plan submitted with the application has been approved by the MOR Development Review Board for its conformance to design standards for the property. The variances will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. The variances would respect the side yard, uh, requirements for the properties owned by other property owners to the east and to the west, as well as the, the property boundaries to the, the north. And the property's rear yards, as stated earlier, it only would be between the shared property boundary of both properties. And number six, that the variance, variances represent generally the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. Generally, it's a reduction of about three feet for both properties, mainly because of the presence of the storm sewer, the smaller legally non-conforming lot, as well as, um, MOR district requirements that limit the, the scale, the size and the scope of, of buildings as well. I believe it's also worth pointing out that during the, uh, development review process that the MOR board noted that, um, a narrow shared pathway could provide an aesthetic, uh, aesthetic value for a public space of the building's tenants with, uh, if certain requirements were met, such as shared lighting or, and the like. A major variance is, requires two-thirds of the, a two-thirds vote to forward to the city council for approval. Uh, you may approve the variance, or the board may approve the variance based on the findings. They may approve the variance with certain terms and conditions. If you do, it's recommended to, um, state reasons or articulate the findings for those conditions, or you may deny their variance. It's also suggested to articulate findings supporting the denial. The staff recommendation is to improve, uh, ZBA case numbers, uh, two thousand and sixteen-major-six and two thousand and sixteen-major-seven with the following condition, that the site is developed in general compliance with the attached site plan and with the applica, and with the application as approved by the city's MOR Development Review Board. Were there any questions that you had regarding the application?
Any questions for staff?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Aside from this center blockway, it appears that I see eleven air conditioning units, so I assume it's, they're building eleven units, five in one, six in the other. so I assume it's, they're building 11 units, five in one, six in the other. And you only have 11 parking spaces. Are there enough parking spaces to meet code?
Yes. Our zoning analysis concluded that there were enough spaces for each building.
How many, I thought you had to have a certain number of parking spaces per bedroom.
There, it, it's required of a certain amount of spaces per unit, based on if it's a one or two-bedroom unit. I would have to quickly go back to the zoning information, but our zoning analysis concluded that it was meeting within code, and the MOR Development Review Board concluded the same.
Okay, I just am hoping that their layout is accurate and in compliance with parking regulations.
The applicant is here, but if they were all one or two-bedroom units, which I believe they were, then there would be a one parking space per unit requirement. So 11 spaces, 11 units.
And even if they're two-bedroom and there are two cars?
That's correct. A two-bedroom unit requires one parking space.
Okay.
Further questions for staff? Thank you. Petitioner would like to come forward, please?
Hi, my name's Andrew Phell. I'm the architect for the project. And I don't necessarily have a whole lot to, to add to the presentation, except maybe to kind of recap how, why we're here again, okay? So, as I think you all remember, initially, we had the storm sewer issue, and because of that, we were granted the variance to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to 20 feet. And during that process, there was, there was obviously a little bit of discussion from the neighborhood about not wanting to grant that variance. So it, in an effort to be the best neighbor we could, we've not used that variance. So the buildings are still set back, they're required, they originally required 25 feet as a front yard setback. That impacted a few other things. And to be perfectly honest, the first time we were here, we weren't quite far enough in the project and didn't realize that we had this extra setback requirement because of the building height. So when we got a little farther into the project, and it was really to the point where we were, we were preparing the documents for the MOR Review Board for those, for those approval meetings, that we realized we had that extra setback. So as a condition of the MOR approval, this variance needs to be granted. But they also did a couple other things, which I think help offset the, what, if, if there would be any impact from, from granting this variance. So for instance, the, the space between the buildings, a requirement of getting a building permit is we have to have a cross-access easement on the, on the space between the buildings, so it'll never be built on, it'll always be open space between the buildings. And we designed the buildings such that the, the lines where we're requesting this variance, that part of the building is where the, where the stairs go up in the building, so there's no real impact on the residents of the buildings. And we've, we've kept that, the request for this variance to the, to the common lot line between the buildings, so there's, there is absolutely no additional impact on any other neighbors. And because of the, another condition of the, of the MOR approval process was we have to also grant a cross-access easement for the parking, because it's accessed off of one lot onto another. The reality of these buildings being sold separately is almost zero, because there, there'll be so many restrictions on easements and things just because of the way, primarily the impact of the storm sewer. There are so many easements that it'd be very difficult to sell these separately. So it's, so I, I don't think there's ever going to be an issue where, where an owner, where somebody buys one, one of these properties and is impacted by the easement. They're all, they'll always be sold together. So I guess with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for the petitioner?
I would just like to make a comment. Thank you for increasing the setback to 25. I just think it's important, and it will make the property more valuable.
Well, it seemed to be very important to the neighborhood, and we're trying to be the, you know, I do a lot of work here. We try to be the best neighbors we can be.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in the audience want to speak against the petition? Are there any additional questions for staff in light of the petitioner's comments? Hearing none, I believe we're ready to call the motions for vote.
We can do these together. Okay, I'll move that we approve with conditions, ZBA case numbers 2016-major-06 and 2016-major-07 with the following conditions. Number one, the site plan is developed in general compliance with the attached site plan and with the application as approved by the city's MOR Development Review Board. And these cases be referred to the city council.
Do we have a, it's been moved, do we have a second? It's now been moved and seconded. Is there any further comment? I believe we're now ready for a vote.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Yutman?
Yes.
Mr. Warren Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Mr. Cho?
Yes.
The motion carries by the necessary requirement for forwarding on to the city council for their review and approval or disapproval, and when will that be?
August 1st.
At the August 1st meeting of the Urbana City Council. Thank you. Is any old business? Any new business? Don't believe we have any audience participation, since we are losing our audience. Is any audience participation? Any staff report? Any study session? And I believe we've finished our business here, and I move that we adjourn.